All right, good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, April 17th. It's 6:30 PM and this is the West Bridgewater Board of Selectment meeting. Before we stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station so everybody could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first article on the agenda is a vote to reorganize the board. This is done every year after an election. And before we reorganize, I want to formally welcome Marcy to the board. Mike and I have been here for many months, a long time, without a need to look to the right. So I apologize in advance if I don't look to the right enough tonight. But I think out of the 12 months I've been here, I think eight has been with two people, prior person sitting in the audience. So it is nice to have a full board and, God willing, it will stay full for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
But welcome. So at this point, what we normally do is we appoint somebody to chair, vice-chair, and clerk. So I don't know if anybody else is interested in chair, but I would be interested in continuing. Mike, I know you've been here for a while too, so I don't want to...it's up to you as well.
Yeah, I think in the interest of the amount of time that the board has been organized currently how we're sitting, I think it is in the town's best interest if we keep Jeff as chair.
I appreciate that and thank you. So, I don't know.
I agree. I second that.
Then I would need somebody just to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to keep Selectman Jeff Ryan as the chair.
Second.
Third. All right, well, thank you both. Next up would be vice-chair. My recommendation, Mike, having, you know, the second most amount of time on the board, makes sense for you to stay there. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to make a motion to be vice-chair.
Second.
All right. Perfect. And Marcy?
I'll take clerk.
Good choice. Congratulations. I'd like to make a motion that Marcy Lee become clerk for the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, with that, next item is some signatories. The Sergi one, traditionally, I think it by bylaws, the chair.
By your rules and regulations, it is the chair.
Okay. So that'll be me. Next is road cut, and then after that is parking clerk.
Yep, so historically, the vice-chair is the road cut permit signatory. Jeff, you had been it most recently because we were down a person.
Yep.
But that would now, under your reorganization, would be Mike, and then parking clerk would be Marcy. So I can answer any questions about those roles, or if you want, just take the board.
Any questions for anyone?
No questions.
All right, so at this point, I'd make a motion. Mike is road cut permit signatory. On favor?
Aye.
Mike, I gift you this pen because a normal pen does not work. I'm those yellow pieces.
Oh, chair.
That was a gift from Christine. She said we got one a year, so. I am going to go from there and make another motion to name Marcy as the parking clerk.
And I'll second.
All righty. Next up, we have Megan Garrity. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Awesome. In the room, and she is here as ratifying her employment as head secretary for the police department. Chief of Megan, would you say a few words about Megan?
I guess it's me. My name is Megan Garrity. I'm coming here to the town of West Bridgewater, former town of Abington, where I worked for the past seventeen years, for the past probably twelve or so of those seventeen. I've been the head admin chief over there, so I'm looking forward to this new challenge and working with you to extend.
Awesome. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Oh, we've got one question. Oh.
Are you moving to town?
I am not.
You're not? Still going to be a resident?
I'm a resident of Woodman.
Of Woodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions?
No questions from me.
All right.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to ratify Megan Garrity's...how did I say it? Garrity's employment as head administrative secretary for the police department.
I will second the motion for Megan. And on her favor.
Thank you.
Yep. Before you leave, real quick, I'm going to jump out of order. I know you received this as well, but I received a letter from a resident who unfortunately had a trip and fall on 106. And the response is, you know, not mentioning names, but if I can read a brief bit of it, it said, "My husband called 911 and within seconds, both the WPD Officer Huey and the WBFD were here. I cannot say enough words about the praise and the way I was treated with care, compassion, and their wealth of knowledge." And then it goes out from there. But we know this happens every day. It's really nice to get a letter to see that it happens and to confirm that it happens. But please thank, you know, everybody for what they do on an everyday basis and extra thanks for this and the letter.
I will, and if I can piggyback on that real quick. I read that at a roll call, and the best part about doing that at a roll call was the poor kid who was referenced to Hates praise. So he did a great thing and he owes him credit, and he put most uncounted letters in every place, so it was a good time for all.
Yep.
So I appreciate that.
And I know the resident. I like the resident. And I, you know, if the person is watching, I will be in touch shortly to see how you're doing.
Not the first time you made somebody feel uncomfortable, isn't it?
Today? That's the one.
All right. Thank you both very much.
Megan, welcome to town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a vote on the second half of the year calendar.
So I've placed this on what you normally meet...is this...do we have one for the phone? Okay, good. Second half. So, yes, we place this on...we normally meet the first and third Wednesdays of every month. However, in the summer, we do have a summer schedule, which is only one in July, one in August. And at the last minute, we sometimes only do one in June, depending on what the workload is. Again, all of these dates can be changed if necessary, but these are just the dates of the meetings and also important dates such as holidays and when the town hall is open and closed. So if you have any questions, if not, I would ask you to take a vote. We post this in advance, and then if we have to make changes during the way, we just make changes as needed.
Any concerns with any of the dates?
I don't see any, Marcy.
No.
Fun motion. Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda for the select board meetings as presented for the second half of the year.
Second.
Vote favor.
Aye.
Good post.
And then in that same vein, we all...I also place the following dates up until the end of June. The board had already approved those prior. Marcy, you're new, so we want to make sure you show up so that you know what the dates are. And also, I know that at one time, there was a concern, Mike, in reference to May. I want to make sure that those dates work for you and if we have to make any adjustments.
I just looked them. We're good. Thank you.
You okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. So at least, Marcy, that what you have.
Yep, thank you.
And we have a meeting right before the town meeting, which is good.
We do.
Excellent. All right. With no issues there, we'll continue down and we'll move on to review and vote on recommendations, motions, and assign readers for the end of a town meeting.
So this can be a little bit tedious, but what we normally do is this, is that I will inform you as to the warrant articles that you have already voted to be placed on the warrant. At this point, what I will do is I'll recommend as to who the readers would be. And what that means is at town meeting, somebody has to move the article. Most of them are pretty straightforward. So for example, the council on aging has a capital budget item for flooring. They're going to be the ones to move the article, but you are going to take a vote to have that person or that department be the actual reader to move the article. So I will go through all of them. At the same time, at the end, we'll then take a vote on your recommendations. Historically, most of the time, it's three zero on all of them, but if there is one or two of them that you're not in favor of, then let us...at the end, you'll say that, and we'll go back to that individual one. Is that okay? So number one and number two are both consent articles, meaning we don't normally have to take a vote at town meeting. The moderator just says, "Is there any objections?" If not, then it just automatically passes. None of them are financial in nature. The Board of Selectmen normally move that consent article. Normally, what we do is we also do it in line with the position of the board. So since the first one is moved by the board, then it would be Jeff as chair. Article three is to set salaries for all elected officials. Again, it's an annual article. Nothing changes. And then the Board of Selectmen normally move that, and then that would be Mike.
What about Article two?
Article one and two is one together as a consent article. Article four is the budget. You have already voted on your budget. I went to the finance committee last week, our last meeting, and the finance committee accepted the board's recommendation. So as you approve the budget, they are recommending that same budget to town meeting. Because that is the finance committee's motion, the finance committee will move that motion. Article five is for exemptions that is under the Board of Assessors, and therefore, it would be the Board of Assessors. Article six is to accept state funds for a state highway grant, better known as Chapter 90. That would be DPW. The next handful of CPC. So Article seven is for their general administrative expense, so that will be CPC. Article eight is to pay off debt at the Friendship Park. That is CPC. Article nine is to add a fish ladder as part of a grant process at the Wall Memorial Park. That would be CPC. Article 10 is a request from the Veterans Memorial Day Committee to add sites at the grave of all the cemeteries. That will be CPC. Article 11 is an annual article to place money into a long-term OTEB funding account, and that is the treasurer. Article 12 is an annual one for a grant between West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Bridgewater, and two other communities in order to be...as part of a state grant process, and so the police department will move that one. Article 13 is an agreement between the police union and the Board of Selectmen during the most recent collective bargaining agreement to remove the police department out of civil service. So the police department will move that one. Article 14 is to place money, $500,000 from free cash, into town stabilization account, which is the rainy day fund, and that means, Marcy, you would be next on that list. Article 14...I'm sorry, Article 15 is for sidewalks. There's $2,100. It will be a transfer from a state fund, which is collected from the Uber and Lyft rides. That money we place into sidewalk fund, that will be DPW. Article 16 is to place $300,000 from free cash into our sidewalk and road construction fund. That would be DPW. Article 17 is to take $48,500 out of free cash to purchase a digital sign in front of the town hall. That will be the town clerk. Article 18 is to move $318,000 in change from free cash for the DPW to be able to purchase a street sweeper. That would be DPW. Article 19 is for DPW to take $99,000 in change out of free cash to buy a new plow truck...a new truck with plow. That would be moved by DPW. Article 20 is to take $19,000 in change to purchase an exhaust wheel in the DPW building. That will be moved by DPW. Article 21 is to repair the culvert on Grant Street using $250,000 of free cash. That will be moved by DPW. Article 22 is to purchase a lift in the DPW facility for the town mechanic, about $11,000 out of free cash. That would be moved by DPW. The police department is requesting a new police cruiser, $64,000 from free cash. That will be moved by the police department. Article 24 is to purchase protective equipment for the fire department. That will be moved by the fire department for about $75,000 from free cash. Article 25 is $67,000 in change from free cash for the fire department to purchase a new Jaws of Life. That will be the fire department. Article 26 is just under $25,000 for new flooring at the COA. That will be moved by the council on aging. Article 27 is to move $72,000 from free cash for new Chromebooks. That will be moved by the school department. Article 28 is $30,000 in change from free cash to be expended for copiers at the middle school, high school. That will be moved by the school department. The next four would all be moved by the water department. Article 29, water surplus transfer for a heavy equipment trailer. Article 30, $8,700 to purchase a light utility trailer. Article 31, $11,000 from water surplus to purchase a new lawnmower. Article 32, $10,700,000 would be a borrowing article for an iron manganese treatment plant. Article 33 is the request from the board to change its name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. That would be Board of Selectmen, and therefore, Jeff, you would be next.
I would just...just to...with Mike, I know we both presented that. Is that something you want to present? You want me to present?
Oh, you can. It's fine.
Article 34 is to change the tree warden from an elected position to an appointed position. That would be Board of Selectmen. Mike, that means that you would be next on that list.
I'll switch. Yeah, let's switch.
Okay. So Jeff, I will have you be 34, and Mike, I will have you be 33. Article 35 is a general bylaw to allow mobile food trucks to be able to be licensed and to conduct business in town. That will be moved by the planning board. Article 36 is a request from the mobile home parks to be able to amend the size of their storage sheds. That's a general bylaw that would be moved by the planning board. Article 37 is to change where contractor storage yards would be allowed in town. In essence, to no longer allow them to be used or be permitted in the general residential area, only in the business industrial area. That will be moved by the planning board as a zoning bylaw. Article 38 is also a zoning bylaw, and that is in reference to where the district...where digital signs can be posted, only in the business and industrial area and no longer in the general residential area. Article 39 is to allow mixed use to be allowed in the business area, which right now, it is not allowed. That will be moved by the planning board, again, a zoning article. Article 40 is another zoning article to allow accessory dwelling units in town. That will be moved by the planning board. Article 41 is to consolidate when there is a special permit in the water resource district area. Instead of having to go to both the ZBA and the planning board, is to consolidate it and streamline it as to receive the permit through the planning board exclusively. That will be moved by the planning board. Article 42 was a zoning bylaw that is being recommended by the Board of Selectmen to amend the general residential from 30,000 square feet to one acre and from 60,000 to 75,000 for double or multi-dwelling. I will tell you, although it's a zoning bylaw and normally moved by the planning board, the planning board is going to speak against this, and therefore, they will not be moving it. So it'll be moved by the Board of Selectmen. Marcy, it is your turn next. Jeff, I know you're the one that was the original proponent, so just let me know as to who, which one of you would love to move it.
I am comfortable speaking to it. If you're not, and Mike, I know you're...up to you as well.
Yeah, I think we share the same energy on moving this forward. I'm not sure where Marcy's taking us on it.
I agree, but it was yours, so I think that you should present it.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
So it'll be Jeff. And then Article 43 is to accept Lamp Post Lane as a town-accepted road. That has to follow a process through the planning board, and as a result, the planning board would be the ones moving it. So if you are in agreement with all of those as to who the readers would be, I would ask you to take a motion to approve those readers or to approve those people or departments to make those motions.
I'll make the motion.
You're good with the...
Yeah, I'm good. I was just making your notes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's good.
So you make the motion. I'll second the motion. Call in favor.
Aye.
The second part to this, then, is that at town meeting, whenever an article is moved and seconded, and they are therefore up for debate, the moderator will then turn to the Board of Selectmen and ask for the board's recommendation. The chair then will make this...will then make a recommendation on behalf of the board as to what the position of the board is and speak to it as to why the board also is either recommending or not recommending that. That doesn't mean other members can't speak, but the chair will make that initial answer. Normally, it will go...the moderator will say, "What is the recommendation of the board?" The chair will grab the microphone, recommend it unanimously, then the moderator asks the finance committee, and then it opens up for debate. So with that said, all of these, then, before you, I would ask for a vote for a recommendation on all of them. If you're in favor, three oh, it is take one vote. If there is any one of these that you want to discuss and potentially would not be in favor unanimously, then we should look back at that one and take a vote individually on that article and then vote on the rest of them in its totality.
I am comfortable with what's on the warrant, but I would ask, Mike, do you have any objections or...
I just want some discussion on Article 34.
And that was?
The tree warden appointment. As opposed to an elected position? And I just want discussion.
Sure. Is there a particular question?
No, I just kind of want to...can we kind of walk the law on this one again? Just kind of...just...
So this issue came to the forefront because Chris Iannatelli, our DPW director, resigned...retired, and as part of his retirement, no longer wanted to be tree warden. And so now, we scrambled a little because we have to get a tree warden. A tree warden is one of the original positions defined by statute that literally goes back to the late 1700s, early 1800s. To that point, you didn't have really established positions. There was no such thing as a DPW department, for example. So if somebody wanted a tree down, or there was a conflict about whether a tree...whether a tree should be taken down or not, then somebody would go to the tree warden, and the tree warden would have to make that decision. Obviously, fast forward 250 years, we have much more complexity to govern it, and we have an established division of DPW that handles the work. In the past 60 years, from what I'm being told, is that basically, two people have been the tree warden. I can't remember the person's name, but it was the person who held the forestry superintendent position for the 30 years before that, and then Chris Iannatelli, who was forestry superintendent and then DPW director. And the fear is, is that this is not clearly defined by statute as to the full role of the tree warden. And so therefore, creates some gray area. The DPW director has authority, the tree warden has authority, and we're looking to try to have efficiency and to minimize conflict wherever there could be. The other part to that is remember, the tree warden is a non-paid position without a budget. Their budget's $400. It's chiefly there in case they have to send out a letter or do postage, but that's the extent of their budget. So if there is a conflict, and the tree warden says, "I want this tree down," and the DPW director says, "I don't think it should come down," well, the tree warden does it no ability to take the tree down. There's no staff, there's no budget, there's nothing that person can do. And flip it. The DPW director says, "I'm going to take the tree down." The warden says, "I don't want you to do it." Now again, we have conflict. And sooner or later, somebody has to adjudicate that. That becomes me, which is difficult because remember, the tree warden's elected. And then somebody would say, "Well, go to the board." But you have no authority over elected officials either. You only know that with other positions in town. So it creates inefficiency, and it creates conflict where we don't need to have conflict. We are very fortunate that we have somebody right now, our conservation agent, Tim Hay, who ran for the position, just got elected. But he agrees that it should be an appointed position. So I have had a conversation with Chris, with Tim, and with Mike Hutchinson, who's now in charge of DPW, and they are all of equal minds that it should be an appointed position. Because remember, there are no qualifications as an elected official. So that means somebody, all they have to do is live...be 18 years old and live in town, get elected, and now you have potential conflict. And we could have a DPW director with 28 years of experience doing this for a living, and now you're getting into unneeded arguments. So I think wherever we can create efficiencies, we should. This gives us an opportunity because Chris is no longer there. Tim Hay did us a favor and ran, so that way, we made sure the position was filled. But he is more than happy to see it become appointed, and if it goes back to the DPW, then he has no problem resigning at that point. So that's the history of it. Happy to answer any other questions.
No, thank you. Thank you very much for the detailed review. I'm more of a mindset of if it's a position that...is it required by the state?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, because I was more of a mindset, if it's creating an efficiency issue, then is there a way that we can just completely eliminate it? Just get rid of it? So it's not a topic that keeps coming up, and that's kind of where my mindset was. That's why I wanted a little bit more to it.
Yeah, for example, you guys appoint every year a fence viewer, which most people don't even know what that is, but that means you have a conflict of two neighbors with a fence. This person goes out, but that's, again, that is...that position's just as old as this, and you appoint that person so that way, nobody else in town has to do it. But nobody else in town actually does that role. Like, you don't want to do that role of the board. We have somebody that can do this role as a tree warden, and they should have the knowledge, the talent, the expertise, the staff, and the budget to do that position.
Any questions on any other articles?
Hope he covered it. Thank you.
That's everything.
Do you need to vote separately on that, or are you okay? So at this point, we can vote to approve all the articles on the warrant.
The only thing I would ask is it's a recommendation, so approve it as a recommendation.
Approve it as a recommendation. For all the articles on the warrant, isn't...well, unanimous, right? So I'm going to make a motion to approve them all. Give me the second.
Second.
That was a tie.
Favor.
Christine can break the tie. And then, in favor. Favor. All right, so they all move forward. Next on the list is signing the annual town warrant.
So again, this is just perfunctory. Obviously, we could have an annual town meeting on May 6th. You just have to vote to accept the warrant as presented and sign it, and the constables will then post it so it's noticed to all town residents at the meeting.
So we'll take care of that. We need a motion to sign. We just sign it.
Your choice.
Yeah. Make a motion and cover all the bases.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual town meeting as presented.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Excellent. I'm now going to jump on the agenda because I saw a guest and a special guest, a very young resident, enter the room. And while the young resident, I believe, is sleeping or fairly quiet, we will adjust the agenda for your sake. So if we jump down to communication reports towards the town officials, the first article is to vote to accept Marcy Lee's resignation as the ADA coordinator. Marcy, I know you've served on that. If you want to say a few words.
No, I'm not...not much to say, except that I was honored to be in that position and be able to, you know, perform the duties of that role, whatever they were. We didn't really know what that role was initially. There hadn't really been a formal ADA coordinator in the town, so we kind of, you know, had to figure it out as we were going. However, it worked out. We were able to secure some grants for the town, so it was a success. And so I was happy to be in that role and happy to move on and give somebody else the opportunity to serve now.
So I need a motion to accept Marcy's resignation. Would you like to make a motion to accept my resignation?
I'll make the motion to accept my resignation as ADA coordinator.
Vote in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Deb, I think you wanted to say a couple of words.
A lot of things, Marcy, first, we didn't have an ADA coordinator because with first step up, we were able to get grants for the past two years, so we've gotten three altogether so far. And, um, I appreciate everything that you did. It was a, when I recover. Sometimes we get that, and sometimes we won't. But that was, thank you for everything you did. And, um, I wish you best of luck on Board of Selectment. And I think you're gonna be amazing, uh, because you were amazing at being ADA coordinator.
Aw, thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
I love you.
Now, Jackie, instead, I want to introduce Chris Trudell, who's gonna be the next ADA coordinator. And Amy Rosalie. She's June, 'cause that's far from earlier. And Chris has a lot of experience with ADA guidelines and stuff, 'cause he was with the DLT and all. And, um, I got to meet with him, with someone potentially to do one of our grants this morning, and he was like right on top with everything, so I think he's gonna be whenever he gets it around being ADA coordinator. And so I'm just glad to be here. This is Chris.
Chris, would you like to say anything? I know Deb just probably stole half your thunder, but that's.
As the child wakes up.
Been on the, um, I've been a volunteer on the committee for about a year now, and it's, uh, it's a really cool opportunity. We've gotten to, as I mentioned, a few different brains from the town. I'd love to get the opportunity to be part of the town and help out any way I can, so. The, the need for coordinator coming up, I'm happy to help and see, see what more we can do to make the town a little bit better, better place.
Any questions?
No questions, no. Um, I actually, I believe, suggested to Chris that he might be really good for the ADA coordinator, coordinator position because of his experience and his, his work background, and I knew that he would be a great fit. So I'm, I'm really happy that you, you have, uh, considered accepting this role. So I have every faith that the ADA committee is in good hands and that they are gonna do big things in the next few years, so. Happy.
No, I'm, I'm just really excited they, uh, that we have two people. Marcy started off, and, and, and Chris, you're, you're just gonna take over. It's, it's, I'm excited for you guys, and I've sat in on, on what, one, one meeting, I think. I mean, we've had some communication, uh, about what you guys do over there, and you guys do great stuff, so thank you, thank you. I think it's only fitting that we let, uh, Marcy also make the motion on this one.
All right, I make the motion to appoint Chris Trudell as the next ADA coordinator for the town.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One last question. How old's your daughter?
Two months.
Two months.
Congratulations.
And she is.
Right in, right into Italian.
Could be one of the earliest attendees to, to a board meeting. I would like to thank her for cooperation at the meeting as well. Congratulations on both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out with the baby tonight. I didn't get to see her beautiful face, but.
There we go.
Maybe next time. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Chris. All right, moving back, and sorry Christine, got you jumping all over. Moving back after the signing of the annual town warrant is the annual Arbor Day proclamation for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. I'm gonna read it into the record. Whereas in nineteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Art Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed, observed with the, with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, Jeff Ryan, Mike Perez, Marcy Lee, the Board of Selectment Town of West Bridgewater, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, as Arbor Day in the Town of West Bridgewater, and urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, we order all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this, in future generations, dated this day, the seventeenth of April, twenty twenty-four. We've read that, we can move along. Next up is to vote on antique secondhand license renewals. Specifically, we have renewals for WB Coin and Jerrulee Buyers LLC, attic treasures, eclectic treasures, lamp, lamplight shop, one horse shag. Any questions or discussions on, on any of these licenses?
No.
Well, it's a Tina.
And again, just make it, please, subject to final inspections and final receiving of documents.
We want to make that motion?
I make a motion to accept the antique secondhand license renewals, pending, uh, in final inspections and licensing.
In final documents.
In final documents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, approve the meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Accept the meeting minutes of April third, twenty twenty-four for review?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of April third, twenty twenty-four for review?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, moving beyond that. Uh, communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Next is to appoint, uh, vote to appoint poll workers.
So again, we, there's a, a list of members that are there. You can either read all of them or just as presented.
Questions or discussions?
I make a motion to appoint the poll workers as presented.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, vote to appoint a record access officer for Board of Assessors in the Police Department.
So by state law, all public records requests now go through the town clerk's office, and the town clerk then forwards those requests to the specific departments um, in, uh, in order to access that information. So with the recent promotion of Daniella Nielsen to the Board of Assessors, and Timothy Nixon as police chief, I'm asking those two people to be named the official record access officers for their respective departments.
Any discussion?
None.
Take a motion?
Make a motion to appoint a record access officer for Board of Assessors and the Police Department as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've already done, we've jumped around a bit tonight, we've actually kind of done the next three items. Two was Marcy, one was Marcy's resignation, Chris's appointment, and then correspondence from the public, not to determine course of action, we have the correspondence that we read to the, uh, police chief. At this moment, uh, it is nice to see that traditionally, the last four or five meetings, Marcy has been the person, uh, in the audience, maybe Al once or twice on occasion. But, uh, we have a, I'm gonna call it a full house, but, uh, we would've made some money if we charged for seats.
Hi, I open Marcy's role.
There we go. Anybody, you're all welcome at this moment to, to comment. Going once, going twice, there's no number three. We'll move around to, uh, the Town Administrator's Report.
So a couple of FYIs, just about use of town roads and town parking lots that I signed off, font so the board is aware. And then jump into the state aid. Uh, I just want to illustrate this, that, we'll blow it up just a little bit. When we presented our budget, we were using the governor's proposal. And you can see that now that the House Ways and Means has put, placed together their budget proposal, we've actually gone backwards by ten thousand dollars year over year. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, ten thousand dollars from the original governor's proposal. So we'll be fine in our budget. But the reason I really highlight this is that there has been much discussion about how Chapter Seventy is a school receipt, and therefore it is an educational, uh, local aid program. It is a town receipt and a town program. It is local aid to the town to help fund all of our departments, including our school department. It is intent is to help sup, support our school department. But as you can see, when the Student Opportunities Act was passed four years ago, and is now being funded by the state, all the state has done is that they've consistently taken money away from the traditional town side, we, um, local aid. It just funneled it over to Chapter Seventy, 'cause ultimately, it all comes to the town. So I have said that the last handful of years, it is a shell game played by politicians on Beacon Hill. They like to be able to say they continue to raise more money for Chapter Seventy, local aid, education than ever before in the history of the state, which is all true. Uh, but all they're doing is taking it from buckets that they normally gave to local communities in other aspects. So whatever, it's what they're doing, it is what it is. I just want to be able to highlight it. So, um, again, we're, right now, we're backwards, ten thousand dollars. We'll see what the House actually votes on, we'll see what the Senate does. There'll be a reconciliation package, the governor has to sign it. This will go on for a handful of more months, but I just want to make sure the board is aware.
I'm a little confused still by that, Chapter Seventy. Can you run it back one more time?
Yep, so Chapter Seventy, um, was instituted many years ago, allowing the state to be able to provide the local municipalities additional funds to use towards education. But it does not go to the school. It goes to the town. The town can then appropriate those funds in any way that it wants to. So if you want to take all of those Chapter Seventy funds in, and you want to just buy police cars with it, you have the legal right to do it. It's not the right, it's not the intent of it. The intent is, is to support your local school system. The last handful of years, there was a lot of talk, in twenty nineteen, the Student Opportunities Act passed in Beacon Hill, and it was meant to give additional aid to local municipalities, so we could have, provide more aid to our local schools. But what the legislature's also done is that they have started to restrict aid going to municipalities and other sectors. I only bring this up because ultimately, we're not getting more money. All it is, is political posturing from Boston, saying, look at what we're doing for education. But what good is it if they're just taking it from other buckets that go to local municipalities? So it's really still up to all of us as taxpayers and at the local level to fund our schools. But to say that we're just relying on Chapter Seventy funds when they're really reducing what the other aid is at our local level is disingenuous. And so I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention, so you can really see in real dollars as to what's going on. Just an FYI. And the, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
And the last is, is that, um, we have not historically done a formal, professional budget presentation at town meeting. I provide the board every single year that I have been here an executive summary. It had never been done before, but you know how difficult it is. You've received fifty-three budgets, it was multiple months, and then we had to consolidate all into one vote in one night. And that's not easy to do. So when I came here, I wanted to provide an executive summary, provide it in a two or three-page document, condense all budgets into one easy-to-read document, and, um, and we vote on it at our last meeting. We've never done that at town meeting. And so I've, I had a conversation with Jeff in the past, Denise, when she was on the board, whether or not, because many other towns, the person in my position will actually present some type of an overview to town meeting as to what the budget is and how it works. Similar to what I did to you, and then I also did to the Finance Committee. I was not expecting this, but the Finance Committee, after I made this same presentation to them, thought they are actually the ones that brought it to me and said, we'd like some, like you to do it at town meeting as well. And I informed them that I work for the board, and so I would bring it to the board as to whether or not you think it's a good idea. We don't have to do it. What we've done, we could continue to do, um, which is the same process we've always done. We go straight into budgets, it gets moved, and people make their votes. Or at that time, I can make a quick executive summary overview of the budget. I would rather not take a lot of questions at that point. If somebody has clarification questions about the summary, I'll answer them. But I'm not gonna answer questions about the budget, 'cause that's what you do when you hold budgets and go through that. But, um, it's, I put on the agenda to see what the board would like to do. I, it's, I'm ambivalent. If you would like me to do it, I'd be more than happy to do it. If you don't think it's necessary, I'm fine with that as well.
I, I'll start the comments, I guess. I'm in favor of it. I think, um, short, right, 'cause the night's long enough. Or potentially long enough, usually long enough.
Short as it can be.
But I mean, if it's, if it's five minutes and it provides a perspective to some people in the room that don't have that perspective. Because let's face it, I think, you know, well, a lot of people come in open-minded and, and have taken the time to look. There are also some people that come in singularly focused, maybe for one or two articles that, that they want to address. And I think it helps everybody in that room to understand where we are as a town, where our money's coming from, how we're spending it this year, where the increases come from. Kind of what you have here, but obviously in a PowerPoint format, and obviously a little shorter. I think it's, I think it's useful information to start the town meeting with. Again, you know, short's a relative term, right? Depends on what we have to speak about, but I'm happy to sit on the side and assist if that's part of it too.
Yeah, and the only other, other item I would mention is, is that although we're talking about the operational budget, the operational budget this year specifically, but in general terms, is augmented by a transfer of free cash. So the way I would envision is that we would do a very quick synopsis of the budget, but then remember, whenever we get to our capital budget items, the first question is, what is free cash, how much do we have? So I would have one sheet that's going to show free cash, what it is, and what we're spending on. So that way, everybody can see it all at that one time.
First thing it needs is a name makeover.
I know, I agree.
Such thing as free cash.
No, I, I agree.
Taxpayer money.
Um, I got a question, is that packet already created?
Nope. No, I, I mean, I think this would be the bones of it, if you will. Um, but no, I, I haven't created that yet.
And then, um, do you have the time to do it prior to the meeting?
Well, that's always the, the magic question, is that obviously it'll, it'll consume some time, but again, I, I, you know, I serve the board, so if the board thinks that this is important, then I've got to make the time, I'll make the time.
Could it, could it be done and reviewed on May first? I think that's our next meeting.
Sure.
I'm in favor. I like the idea of educating the residents. Some, some don't understand, so I, I'm in favor.
I guess I'm the only one being cautious of your time.
Thank you.
But I'm also in favor.
I laughed at eight o'clock last night, he was still here, he's always here. Um, Mr. Anderson?
I think if that was, uh, presented in front of the people at the meeting, I think it would help make people decide on how they want to vote on things too, depending on how much money is for this and for that. At least that would make me decide on what I should, should think vote for and what I shouldn't vote for. I think it's good in here.
I agree.
If it's possible.
I guess, I guess, I gotta just stop. Denise, how are you, what can I do for you?
So I think it might also be helpful for people to understand there's an article with, what, eleven million? For the Water Department? That's not included in these papers, your operational budget. And that's gonna come from taxpayer money, not Water Department revenue, right? So I mean, you can, you can put a little notation in there that none of this includes what the debt will be for the borrowing deal eleven million for the Water Department.
Yep, just, I want to clarify one item. The eleven million dollars financed by the Water Department will still be in your water rates, not in the tax side.
It will.
It will. They will have to adjust their water rates at a future date in order to cover that, that expense.
That's going to be a big increase in the water rates.
And obviously, I don't know those numbers, and I'm glad Denise brought that up because it is gonna depend on the scope of what you want me to discuss. Because if I'm going to get into that level of detail, which I can do, I can't do it in five minutes, unless you want me to do a poor job. So that'll, that'll be part of the challenge.
Denise, well, you're absolutely correct in what you said, ten point four, but, there is also hope that some of that money will be recuperated from the state as well. So, but while we have to plan for the whole thing.
Right.
We hope that that's not the case.
Is it at zero now with the temporary feds? Feds just dropped the PFAS rate, make it down to two or four?
This, that money, my understanding, that money for that well addresses iron or manganese, does not address PFAS, but PFAS, again, this is just, I would confirm it with the Water Department. It's my understanding that PFAS, the concern with PFAS isn't from that well, it's from the well where we've invested the four million to, uh, to treat that well, so. That well in particular produces a lot of, or that treatment plant is there to deal with the wells that produce a lot of iron and manganese, and that's what that ten point four. It's both a rehab. deal with the wells that produce a lot of iron and manganese, and that's what that ten point four, it's both a rehab and, and a filtering for the iron and manganese. The other well that came online, we have December numbers, I don't know if we've gotten final PFAS numbers, but anyhow, the other well, the, the four million that we invested, that is, its first round of numbers have produced zero on the PFAS. Hopefully, that continues. It's probably not real to think that at some point, the other one that we're addressing with the ten point four won't be more money to filter PFAS, but that's not the primary function of that money.
Thank you.
Yep. As you know, that's what happens in a town warrant appointment. At this point, I guess, it doesn't need to be a vote, maybe as much as just a recommendation.
Yeah, I think I, I understand the spirit of the board. What I'll do is I'll put together a, what I think the presentation would be between now and May first, place it on that agenda, and, you know, I'll, I'll put it on there, it'll be a seventy-five-minute presentation, and, and then you can cut it down to five minutes.
Maybe we can have every state rep come in and speak before you as well.
Oh, boy.
With that, is there anything else, Mike?
I do not have anything.
Marcy?
Nothing.
One down?
No.
Much to go? At this point, take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.